Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to our August 1st, 2019 Town Council meeting. We love the energy in the room. I think some girls brought that energy today. So we're really grateful that you guys are here today and joining with us for the beginning part of our council meeting. This is our first council meeting for fiscal year 20. It's kind of hard to wrap our heads around the fact that we're now talking about 2020 fiscal year. I think our budget director probably feels the same way. So we're really excited to kick off another great year in our community and really proud of the work that was done last year that we can continue to build upon. At this time, we'll turn it over to Council Member Anderson to assist us with the beginning of our meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Erin, would you come down and join us? Do we have any other scouts in the audience? Come on down. I'm sure we have some other Eagle Scouts in here, don't we? We have any Eagle Scout? We have any other Eagle Scouts?
That includes Girl Scouts as well, right?
Steve Earle's an Eagle Scout.
We've got some Girl Scouts coming to-
Girl Scouts that are working on gold and I think it's your gold award? Okay. Well, let me introduce Erin Townsend. Erin is going- he was the one scout we found in the audience tonight that was attending to see what we do here at the council meeting. So we've asked him to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Audience, please rise. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Valerie. We'd like to ask Council Member Anderson if you'd also offer our invocation. Double duty today. The pastor that had signed up to deliver our invocation today was unable to make it. So thank you, Council Member Anderson, for stepping in.
Thank you. Our Father in Heaven, we are indeed grateful to be gathered together this beautiful evening. Father, we're thankful for the many blessings we enjoy, especially being so blessed to be in this community. And we are thankful for each member of this community and for the strength they bring to the town of Gilbert. We are thankful for inspiration that is received that helps us to grow and continue to influence lives in a positive way in this community. And we ask that thy Spirit will be here this evening, that that will continue as we make decisions that affect the members of this community. Again, we are so grateful for this opportunity and for the families that we have. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you. While we're getting ready for our next agenda item, I just wanted to take a point of personal privilege from the end of the meeting and just thank all of the teachers and staff and administrators who have worked so hard to get schools ready. I know today was another big day in Gilbert where we had- you probably noticed traffic changed a little bit in the community, but we're grateful that Gilbert Public Schools was able to start today. And Chandler and Higley Schools started just a couple weeks ago. I know we have a lot of charter and private schools starting in the next week. So a lot of hard work being done and a lot more to come in the next year. So thank you to everyone for driving carefully. We have a slogan in the town. It's "Speed down, eyes up, drive safely." So we just encourage everybody to remember that and especially remember that there will be added enforcement in our school zones specifically, especially as we start school. So Council Member Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the privilege on July 3rd to go out and meet this group of girls as a surprise. And I went and proclaimed July 3rd as Gilbert Softball Little League Day because as they were celebrating 10 years of being a league here in Gilbert, they also had four teams headed off to play in tournaments. And we'll talk about that in a minute. But I want to just read a couple of lines from this proclamation that we gave. Their mission, through proper guidance and exemplary leadership, the Gilbert Softball Little League program assists young ladies in developing the qualities of citizenship, discipline, teamwork, and physical well-being. By espousing the virtues of character, courage, and loyalty, the Little League softball program is designed to develop superior citizens rather than superior athletes. The teams have been participating in team-building exercises, volunteering in the community, and most of all, practicing hard to become the best softball players in the state. Two teams had already faced challenges, minors ages 8 to 10 and majors 10 to 12. Each fought in one tough district series to beat their opponents and advance. The other two teams had no opponents to face in the district tournament. And then all four teams advanced to the Arizona State Little League Tournament in July. So I, like I said, on behalf of Mayor Jen Daniels, went and proclaimed July 3rd as Gilbert Softball Little League Day. And they are here to help us celebrate that and to tell us how they did in those tournaments. And if you would like to come down, and let's bring all the girls down, too. Come on, girls.
Introduce yourself and tell us how the team looks. Okay. So thank you very much for having us here. My name is Angie Davidson. I'm the president of the league. I've been the president for the last couple of years, been on the board for the last couple more years than that. But I, like she said, we are celebrating 10 years this year and we couldn't have gone out with a bigger bang. This has never happened with Gilbert Softball Little League ever before, to have four teams go to the straight or go to the state tournament. So we're very proud of every single one of these girls. They practice six days a week for three hours a night. So if that tells you dedication, and like she said, these girls are eight years- as little- as young as eight years old, all the way up to 16. So that in itself deserves a round of applause. Very proud of them. So I wanted to introduce the teams. We have our little 8 to 10-year-olds. They had to beat Queen Creek to move on to the state tournament, and they played in Cottonwood. And so that is this team. It's coached by Ross Scott, myself, and Meredith.
Have them raise their hands, girls. Who's on that team?
Who's on the 8 to 10 team? Yep. All right. Then next, we have our 9 to 11 team. They are coached by Matt Hess, who's here somewhere. Justin and also Jason Skoda. They did not have a tournament against- in district. They went on to play in Sierra Vista and were there for six days. And I'm proud to say that they came back with the state title. So very exciting.
Raise your hands, girls. Who's on that team?
Raise your hand. Very cool. And then we have our majors division, which is our 10 to 12-year-olds. If you want to raise your hand, they're coached by Brett, myself, and Gary Childress. And they also competed in Cottonwood right after July 4th. So if you want to raise your hand, awesome.
Go ahead, right up.
And then last but not least, this is our last division to go. They didn't get the pleasure of going out of state or going out of the city, unfortunately. They traveled to Avondale, which is a travel in itself, I think.
It is.
Especially from Gilbert. But this was our- this was a young team. It was made up of 12-year-olds. That division is actually 13 to 16. So we had to get an approval from Little League. We had- half of our team was made up of 12-year-olds. So they competed hard. And so our senior division is made up in the back there.
Raise your hands.
Yeah. And they are coached by- they were coached by Estrella, by Art, and by Lucy. I'm sorry. Lucy, I'm sorry.
It's a lot to keep track of.
Yes. It was a lot to- a lot of people involved in that whole thing. So we want to thank the town of Gilbert because we couldn't do this without you if we didn't have the fields available to us. And this year, Old McQueen is now the home for Gilbert softball, which is amazing. So we honestly, we couldn't do this without you. We wouldn't have the fields to practice on. So thank you for making this such a great environment for these girls to play in. So thank you, guys. Congratulations, everyone.
And I surprised them that morning with the printed proclamation and a frame and everything. So that was a surprise for you, and you got to take that with you. So why don't we get a picture with all the girls and Mayor Daniels? And if we can scooch everybody in, scooch everybody in, make sure that you can see this lady right here in the coral sweater. Because if she can't see you, if you can't see her, then she can't see you. Whose little sister is this? Girls, make sure you get in there so we can see you. You're going to have to get all the way in there so that we can see you. Go ahead. We can't see you. There you go.
How many of you guys know what a boomerang is? All right. So you guys are going to do like a little movement, like point or go like that or- All right, ready? One, two, three, go.
Congratulations, girls. You can all go back to your families. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thanks for representing Gilbert so well.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I think we'll do a little shift change here. And during that time, I'll ask the clerk to please conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eddie Cook.
Here.
Council Member Scott Anderson.
Here.
Council Member Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Council Member Jordan Ray.
Here.
Council Member Jared Taylor.
Here.
Council Member Amy Yancees.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Lisa. At this time, we will have communications from citizens, but out of respect for those who came to speak, I think I'll wait just a few minutes until the room clears out. We want to make sure we give you our undivided attention. So we'll just wait a couple minutes. But maybe Vice Mayor, you can tell us who's up first and who's on deck.
Yes. We'd like to invite Lisa Punti Del Rio. Lisa, if you can come up to the podium and share us your name and place of residence.
And Lisa, I'm just going to ask you to wait just a few more seconds, if that's okay. And we'll let these awesome kids-
And Lisa will let you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Patrick, will you be running the timer? Thanks.
I don't think he remembers how to do it.
Okay. I think we could probably hear you now without you having- so thank you.
Sure. Hi, my name is Lisa Punti Del Rio, and I am a resident of Gilbert. I've lived here for the last 17 years. I'm in Ashland Ranch. The reason I came tonight is I wanted to talk about- my son swims for Campo Verde. And so fortunately, we thought, in case for people don't know, Campo Verde doesn't have a pool. And so they've been swimming at the Perry Pool, which the town of Gilbert owns, but it's in the Chandler Unified School District. And there's an intergovernmental agreement that they have the pool during the school year. And unfortunately, one of the- another Chandler Unified School, Castile, didn't have a place to swim this year. So our boys were displaced, or not just our boys, the whole swim and dive team, where we thought they would be displaced. Fortunately, for this year, it looks like we're set. They lost their normal practice time that they've held for the beginning. I don't know if it's over 10 years, but they will get to practice from 6 till 8:30 this year. We don't know what's going to happen, though, next year. So I'd like- I came tonight to find out and to ask that we consider building another pool for our district, in our district, not- because we have one in Higley, one, the Perry Pool, and then we only have Greenfield and Mesquite, which I think are quite older pools to begin with. So I just was hoping that that might be something. I don't know how that process takes place, but that we look at doing that because next year, and as Gilbert continues to grow as it is, it's going to continue to be an issue. And these kids work so hard at what they do. And I hate to see them not have the opportunity to do what they love.
Thank you. We'd like to invite Christina Crusoe. Christina, if you could share us your name, place of residence for the record. Thank you. And you'll have three minutes to
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Christina Crusoe, and I've been a resident in Gilbert for 12 years. I know this is an issue that I've brought to you before in years past, but I feel that it needs to be reiterated again. It's about spending our tax dollars and advocating for nonprofits. I ask you to reconsider gifting selected nonprofits our tax dollars in the annual budget, no matter how worthy their work or advocacy may be in the eyes of some people. It would be more appropriate for you to encourage us as citizens to give privately to nonprofits. It's not the role of government to pick and choose nonprofits and gift them our tax dollars. And as you might know, I have a great love for nonprofits. I've been the executive director of a few, and I sit on a few boards. Now it's come to my attention that the town is allowing nonprofits to request the primary symbol of our community, the water tower, to be lit up in particular colors to represent and advocate for their organization. Additionally, town staff is promoting these nonprofits on town's social media platforms. Again, not the role of government and not an appropriate use of our tax dollars. Most recently, there was a nonprofit that requested to be highlighted in this program. And the very same day that the application was received, the tower was lit up and stayed lit for longer than the town's program, usually a lot's time for, the same day. According to the town policy, the application needed to be received 60 days in advance, and actually, it just changed to 30. So there seems to be some favoritism going on here. On that same day, the town staff member exchanged a text message with you, Mayor Daniels, letting us know, or letting them know that, or letting you know, excuse me, that the request was processed and it would be lit up that night, Monday, June 24th, through the following Sunday. I was surprised to see your response, that quote, "If there's any ruckus, please let me know," end quote. So you were anticipating that this could be an issue, maybe because of the political charge behind it. The rainbow has had many meanings over time, but in recent years, it has become a politically charged symbol against our religious freedom. Just look at the Supreme Court and the cake baker, Jack Phillips, in Colorado. But then you knew it might cause a ruckus. If you choose to keep this program, and I hope you don't, but if you choose to and highlight nonprofits, it could become very problematic. Can you imagine if our nation's largest abortion provider, Planned Parenthood, requested that you lit up the tower bright pink, and our town staff members would be on social media advocating for abortion? The work of this nonprofit? I'm against all nonprofits being advocated for, even the ones I love, to receive our tax dollars because it's not the role of our government. And I thank you for considering my request.
Mayor, we'd like to invite Catherine Gronke to the front. Catherine, if you could share us your name, place of residence for the record. We'll give you three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Can I give you something I printed?
Yes, you can give it to half there.
Hi, good evening. I'm Catherine Gronke. I'm another Campo Swim mom who's here tonight. I did earlier this week send all of you emails. And in that email, I had two specific things that I wanted to discuss. The first was what Lisa covered about the intergovernmental agreement between the town of Gilbert and the Chandler School District, according to Perry Pool. But the other thing was that I realized when the conversation started happening about why Campo parents were so upset about this, it came down to the fact that a lot of parents weren't really aware of what the pool situation looks like. I live- well, I live across from Chandler-Gilbert Community College, and I've been with my kids in Gilbert Parks and Rec for over 20 years. So my kids have swam all the way up through high school and also with the club. And so I understand swim lingo, and it's important to us, but I realize that's not always important to everybody else. So the first thing I wanted to highlight is that the town of Gilbert has four pools, and I kind of color-coded them on my little lunch hour today. The first is that Mesquite and Greenfield, those go to Gilbert Public Schools for practice. Okay? The Williams Field is in orange. That goes to Higley Schools for practice. They have two schools there. Perry Pool is in green. And it used to be a Gilbert and then also a Chandler school. So now with Castile moving in, that's a Queen Creek school, and Chandler- Campo Verde is going to be displaced. We also, in Gilbert, have Desert Ridge High School. They don't have a pool, and they rent from Skyline. So as we started putting together what this looks like, it became really obvious that we are just horribly short of swimming space for kids in the town of Gilbert, for little kids as well as high school kids. And the high school kids are going to be without a place to swim. And of course, then Desert Ridge has to pay extra to swim in the city of Mesa. So we did some kind of numbers to look at. There are six high schools. Only two of the pools in Gilbert belong to Gilbert Public Schools for Practice. That's actually one pool for 17,500 Gilbert students. In Chandler, you would find that you have one pool for 11,000 students. In the city of Mesa, you have one pool for 7,000 students. So we look very much like we don't have enough space for our kids to be competitive. The Campo parents are going to be quite excited about all of this. They are a very competitive team, if you're not aware of that. They have been in the top five of D2 consistently over the last 10 years. And they have a lot of kids who are really excited about, you know, their future in swimming. A lot of kids who have signed collegiate contracts coming out of Campo Verde. And we'd just like to make sure that we have the ability to move
Thank you. Next, we'd like to invite Andrea Peterson to the front. Andrea, if you can share us your name and place of residence for the record.
Hello. My name is Andrea Peterson. I've been a Gilbert resident since 1996. Some of you may know me from my time I spent on the Parks and Rec Board. I'm also here to talk about the Campo Swim team. My fellow swim moms have explained our situation very well. What I want to basically ask from the- from Ms. Mayor and the town council is, the IGA that was signed probably a decade ago, it was- the spirit of that IGA, I believe, was that this was going to be a shared facility. And Campo and Perry have been working in that vein for a decade. On basically a handshake agreement that yes, we will share this facility, that we understand that the town of Gilbert is paying for fully. That is on the Chandler High School property. And now that our kids are potentially being displaced, we would just like the town council to help us come with- come up with something in writing that we still have a right to that pool that the Campo kids have been using for the past decade. It just breaks our heart that we're getting basically kicked out of the place that we've been called home- we've been calling home for the past 10 years. And so I would formally like to ask you guys to help us put something in writing for next year, so make sure that Campo does have a home. And I'm hoping that the city of Chandler will understand that we're asking for them to just, in good faith, continue the spirit of that we are sharing this facility that, as Gilbert taxpayers, we are paying for. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to invite Leslie Johnson to the podium. Leslie, if you can share us your name and place of residence for the record. Thank you. And you'll have three minutes to speak to us.
My name is Leslie Johnson. I've lived in Gilbert since 1992. I live in Val Vista Lakes, and I serve on the Board of Directors for the Regatta, which is one of the sub-associations for the Greater Val Vista Lakes, 108 lots. And I've been on the board for about 12 years. And two months ago, within that capacity, I've come to know one of your departments that I heretofore didn't know anything about, and that is the Water Distribution Department. And it has to do with fireplace- fire hydrant replacement. And I'm just here to commend the department. I've had- most of my communications has been with Raphael, but I've come to see that the department functions excellently. And just in the short two months that I've been working with them, they're already in our sub-association, and they're replacing the fire hydrants. And I've been around the block. I've seen a lot of things and a lot of ways that governments work and vendors work. And I'm just- I just want you to know, I'm really, really impressed with this department. And that's why I came tonight.
I think Jessica heard that quite well. We'd like to invite Joe Guzik to the front. Joe, if you can share us your name and place of residence for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Joe Guzik, proud Gilbert resident. Mayor Daniels, fellow town council members, all Gilbert staff, residents, and guests of our beautiful community. As I tell you, I'm the lovable, slightly annoying American. I'm the education Lorax. As we celebrate today, the first day of Gilbert Public Schools Day, today is actually Education First Day in the state of Arizona for the fourth year in a row. So I'll read you this. "The tradition continues of celebrating Education First Day every August 1st regardless of the day of the week it falls on. This is the day we remind ourselves that a five-year-old will attend one of our schools for the very first- for the very first time, and the day when a 17-year-old will attend one of our schools for their last first day in our Arizona K-12 student education system, just like we did wherever we grew up. Some of our schools have already started. Others will start this week, and the rest will start in the next week or two, as Mayor Daniels mentioned. Schools are in session for FY 2019, 2020. And as adults and- and as adults, this is the day we remind ourselves of this continuous investment of time that sits in at over 4 billion hours of effort annually from our students, parents, educators, slash staff, which will grow as our state population grows. Let us not forget the dollars that are invested. We allocate and utilize over $11 billion from-" We allocate and utilize over $11 billion from the parents who paid fees, tuition, taxes, and made donations that are collected at the site, local, county, state, and federal level. I do not forget the other community members and businesses that support our schools via fees, donations, and taxes as well. And yes, this will grow as our state population grows. There is no doubt that education is truly a community effort and always has, always will. So as to ensure we educate our Arizona children time and time again, and let us not forget the visitors to our state that pay a variety of taxes to help us pay for our Arizona K-12, to them, I say thank you for visiting our beautiful state. This year, I asked our highest-ranking elected officials to understand the billions of hours slash time invested, and the importance of allocating the right amount of dollars to ensure that we do not waste anyone's time or hard-earned money. I'm confident this is our most important continuous investment if we truly believe in life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and why I regularly say that education comes first. Celebrate this day the way you choose, and before you know it, this school year will be over, and a new school year will begin in 2020. And yes, for the fifth year in a row, we will celebrate Education First Day 2020 in the state of Arizona, Saturday, August 1st. Please mark your calendar. My personal request to all the students, educators, parents, is to please take advantage of this 2020 school year to the fullest. I'm proud to invest in you, as others were proud to invest in me. Please take advantage of this given school year opportunity, because it only comes once. And to the rest of the community members and the businesses to be supportive, because one of these days, these children will grow up and become adults. And as adults, they will work for a business and provide you a product or a service, and I'm confident you will like to be provided with an excellent product or service. Our Arizona K-12 education system is built to provide an opportunity, the only opportunity I believe we must provide, is the one that's based on education excellence. I just wanted to say thank you to the council and all the years that you've done for the student and the monk. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And I wanted to make sure we heard all of the Campo parents before I said anything. We're not allowed to respond to the criticism or to the requests from the DIA, since it's not a matter that's posted on our agenda. But I just wanted you to know that we do have a meeting scheduled with Gilbert Public Schools and our Parks and Rec team in the coming weeks. I've spent a lot of time on the phone actually trying to help clarify some of the information that's been shared. Our goal is absolutely to serve the residents of our community to the best of our ability. And we will work directly with our schools in order to make that happen and ensure that that, that does take place. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that there has been action on our part. It's been a little difficult to stop or stem the flow of incorrect information that's been sort of swirling, but we're doing our best to make sure everybody is operating from the same playbook, which I think is critically important. So we'll continue to work on that effort. Councilmember Ray is the liaison to Gilbert Public Schools, and absolutely will be part of that assistance. So we'll do our very best to do that. Wanted to make sure that was noted. This time, we'll move to our consent agenda and ask Vice Mayor Peterson to assist.
Yes, Mayor, we're going to pull Agenda Item 4A and Agenda Item 6. We're going to move to continue Agenda Item 3 to August 15th. And I know this is in the public hearing, but Agenda Item Number 20 as well is going to move to August 15th. With that, a move that we approve, Agenda Items 2, 4, 4B, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That matter passes, the motion passes with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 4A.
That'll be Councilmember Taylor. He just wanted to make a comment.
Mayor, thank you for the time. I'm supportive of the item, and love to see the success of Park University and our other great partners in there. What I wanted to make a comment on is, in some of the information we got from staff, there was a note there that council had not given them specific direction relative to selling the building. We've talked about that on and off. I figured it's a good time. We've, we've been in this for a few years. It might be a good time to just stop and do a spot check and see if it is a good time to sell, if there is consensus here. So I've got a card here that really is just asking if we can have that discussion, maybe September, where we think that that is. And I wanted to circulate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. We do have a request to speak by Jeff Erlich, who is the great ambassador of the Park University, and we'd like to invite you forward. Thank you.
Great. My name is Jeff Erlich. I'm a Park University and a Gilbert resident. Thank you, Mayor Daniels, Town Council members, and town officials. I do want to say one thing. Our softball coach is here. I think, I believe, I saw her. And she had a whole lot of possible recruits sitting right over there earlier.
I was gonna say, were you recruiting?
It is an honor to again address this group. It was four or five months ago, we gave our support and welcomed U of A, University of Arizona, to the university building in Gilbert. I'm here today to once again ask for your support and partnership. In the past year, Park University went from one student, one student, who came in to visit with us because he noticed the water tower was lit in park colors and wondered what that was all about. And today, we stand before you and to announce that in a few days shy of three weeks, we'll welcome around 300 students to Park Gilbert. It's been an amazing voyage with the Park Buccaneers in Gilbert. As you know, we began our journey with a few offices and a couple of classrooms. Today, we use nearly half of the university building with realistic expectations to meet our five-year projection of 750 students. It is our hope that we will continue to grow within the university building. But of course, I believe we will eclipse this, this projection long before our fifth year. We enjoy considering Park as Gilbert's university and the awesome responsibility that comes with such a mantle. But we're up to this. We continue to bring new employees, expand marketing, and add assets to the university. But most important, to continue with academics that offers degrees that make sense, are finished in four years, and with tuition that's far below any other private institution in the Valley. And these are just a few of the reasons we're hopeful that the Town of Gilbert will continue with its support of Park University by approving the lease of one of the most beautiful buildings for educating students in the East Valley. We didn't come here to dip our toe in the water of educational water. No, we're here. We are Gilbert's university. We buy houses, we pay rent at apartments, we buy groceries, we enjoy the Heritage District and all that comes with such a wonderful town. I hope to encourage you, as the Town Council, to support the extension of our lease and the benefits that come with this, with this to the community, to our students, to our soon-to-be students, and to the employers of the, of the East Valley. On behalf of Park University and the employees, students, our Board of Trustees, and many others, I thank you for, for the opportunity to grow with Gilbert and the East Valley and to address you this evening.
Thank you, Jeff. That's tremendous growth and something that we can all celebrate in Gilbert. I actually think, Jeff, you and Donna have probably become some of Gilbert's greatest ambassadors, probably done more to recruit people to Gilbert than maybe the entire Town Council, myself included, has. So we're really grateful for the work that you've done to continue to raise the bar and to produce quality education for not just our residents, but those who might choose to come to Park University, and also to our staff who have been taking advantage of some of the partnerships that we have with you. So thank you for that.
Mayor, I'd like to just expand on what you just said. Jeff and Donna are everywhere that I go. They are amazing residents in the Town of Gilbert. And Jeff, I love your haircut. I haven't seen you in about, I haven't seen you in about four weeks. And the coaches, since you have a coach here in the audience, and your sports teams that I saw received jerseys today, and will be starting your teams and your games up very shortly, I think maybe August 17th is the first weekend of sports, perhaps? So out in the West Valley, maybe? So I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you for being a great partner to the Town of Gilbert, to the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce, and just keep doing what you're doing, because you're doing it really well.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Taylor's also wearing park colors today, so that was...
I am.
That was on purpose, I'm sure of it.
It was great. Well done.
All right. With that, we can entertain a motion?
Mayor, move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Let Gilbert's university continue to grow. Thanks. That moves us to Agenda Item 6.
That will be Councilmember Anderson.
Yes, I'm not sure who I address this to. I just want to express a concern. I hope this isn't the future where we exceed our budget by this much. Dave, maybe I could address this to you. And I should have called you earlier and talked about this, but I'm just, I hope this isn't a preview of things to come where bids are coming in this high over our budget numbers. And I just wanted to clarify that with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Anderson. This is, this one, I believe, is probably going to be unique. It, the budget for this one was established based upon 2013 values. There has been, there had been quite a bit of cost growth that has occurred in the construction industry over the years that have ensued between there. There have been adjustments that have been made to the budget. We've typically kept those based upon the inflation indexes that we were provided, and it turns out that they were not adequate, pretty woefully inadequate. So we've been looking at things even more robustly in the ensuing years, in this past year and then going forward, to make sure that those construction cost growths have been captured.
So you do believe this is an anomaly, that we're not going to see a pattern being established here?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, that is a great question, and I'm afraid it's, it is, it is not going to be an isolated anomaly, but there's not going to be too many of them. We have a few other projects that are in process now that, when they come forward, there will be some adjustments that are going to happen, because they fell in this exact same situation, where we had already entered into the design effort of it and the ability to be able to anticipate the severity of the construction costs, inflations that were occurring in the market. Those are projects that were hard bidding to test the market. Several of them, we'd started out in the C-MAR process. We were too far beyond anything we felt comfortable bringing to the common council, so we have, again, taken those out and hard-bid them. We've tested the market to get the very best value we're able to get.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That does complete our consent agenda and moves us to our public hearing. Are there any agenda items that the council wishes to discuss on public hearing?
Mayor, I'd like to pull Agenda Item 14 for discussion and comment.
Item 18.
Additional public comment? I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, and 19, and I will close the public hearing on those agenda items and entertain a motion.
Mayor, a move that we approve Agenda Items 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, and 19.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 14. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 14.
Leslie here is the question. All right, Kyle, you're up. Yeah, you had the picture jacket on.
I did. Yeah, I didn't want you to think I was Leslie.
I think she's a little bit more attractive than you are.
This is going sideways.
First of all, the comment I want to make, I know that a few years back, this was of contention, and I just wanted to say that since then, you know, I have had the pleasure of dining at Sushi Broker with my family, and I would say that the Sushi Broker team has been a wonderful asset in our downtown. They have been very professional, and all the things that were of the past, by no means have I seen any of that of what was prior up in Scottsdale. And in fact, the Sushi Broker team has taken an abuse from our, top of our parking garage, from the young folks throwing and doing all sorts of crazy things over the top of a parking garage, and they've been a great partner to bear through that, and thanks to our PD team for truly enforcing that. And then Patrick's leadership and his team have literally blocked off the top deck for employees only. So we've come with some fantastic solutions. But one of the things I do want to ask, I was going to ask Leslie, and I never got around to doing it today, is that there was an interesting history on the liquor license with Sushi Broker, where it looked like there was a possibility of a cancellation of that agreement back in 2016, and a possible, you know, reinstatement of another liquor license agreement. And obviously, you know, the owner could be the agent, or there could be a third-party agent and so forth. My question is this, when, when a restaurant, for some reason, cancels a liquor license or the state cancels a liquor license, how do we get notified that that liquor license may be canceled and that that establishment may no longer serve alcohol? How does the code compliance part of that get information back from the state and so forth?
Mayor, council, the Town is notified by the state Liquor Board when liquor license is, is approved by the state. In this instance, the 2016 liquor license was canceled, I believe, before it even made it to the state, and there was even a decision made by the state. They returned to council with a different plan in place, some different representatives. That was the liquor license that then went on to the state and was approved and has, has been in place. What is happening now is there's a sale of the property, a sale of the restaurant. So the new owner is applying for a new liquor license in, in his name or their name in order to run the, run the restaurant.
And again, I wasn't really thinking about the cancellation of their license, but in just in general, if there's a liquor license that is canceled at any of our, you know, businesses that offer liquor, do we get notified by the state that it is canceled? And does the compliance team go out just to check to make sure they're not...
It's my understanding that we, we do receive notification, but I do not believe we, we do not send out code compliance to see if they actually have stopped serving or not. That's more of a state function at that point in time.
Okay. That's good. Thank you for the clarification. Mayor, that's all I had. With that, I move that we approve Agenda Item 14.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing on Agenda Item 14. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. And I think it's really worth noting, I just want to echo the comments that were made by Councilmember Peterson and Vice Mayor Cook. They've really been, Sushi Brokers has really been incredible partners with us, so thank you. I'm sure there's someone here from Sushi Brokers, and I'm grateful for their... Oh, I, I see you. Yes. Bridget's friend Jeff is here, so thank you. And thanks for being great team, team partners in our Heritage District. We appreciate it. That moves us to Agenda Item 18. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 18.
I'm going to get on my soapbox again. We've, we are extending the use of A-frame signs in this, and you all know my position on A-frame signs. And I, I see Kathy back there, and when we talked about this before, we talked about a report coming from the chamber, and I got a great report from the chamber previously, but I want to continue with that as these signs, the use of these A-frames continue to be used in the town. If we can get those reports again, so that we can make sure that they're, they're satisfying the need that is out there, or not satisfying the need, whatever it may be, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Vice Mayor?
And Mayor, I know that, Councilmember Anderson, I do not see the same on these A-frame signs, but I am grateful that the A-frame signs are there and for our businesses to use them, because it provides a great opportunity for them to advertise their businesses, because that may be the only budget they have to advertise their businesses. So I know that we're looking forward to the report. I'm looking forward to report. With that...
I feel pressure sitting in between you, but glad it's working out so far. Thank you. I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 18 and entertain a motion.
They're moved.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to administrative items. Did I say 19? I meant 18. I apologize. We did. That moves us to administrative items. Agenda Item 21. That moves us to administrative items. Agenda Item 21, our presentation on the findings of the Gilbert resident survey, which we've been anxiously awaiting. Melissa's here. Thanks, Melissa. Melissa, can you just introduce yourself and let people know what your title is? Because not only do I think it's cool, I think you're a genius. So, if you could share that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, I'm Melissa Cannon. I'm the data content strategist in the Office of Digital Government. So, my role is to tell data stories. And I'll pull up one of the data stories.
All right.
So, I'll be presenting the results from the National Citizen Survey. So, we released the survey back in the spring, so around April time. And all of the surveys were actually due at the end of April. And all summer, Melanie and I have been kind of poring through all these results from the National Research Center. So, just a quick kind of background, the National Research Center does the National Citizen Survey across the whole nation. So, over 600 communities that we are benchmarked against. They also do a peer benchmark. So, we have about 17 communities in that one. So, our report will highlight just the ranks on a national scale, benchmarks with them, and then the comparison between northern and southern residents and changes since 2017. So, who took the survey? We had a combination of mailed and online opt-ins. So, the 2-2 Santana Freeway is more of, it's a dividing line between the north and the south part of Gilbert. All the little dots you can see were all of the residents that received a mail notification, like a postcard or a survey. And then we also had an online opt-in. So, we received over 2,000 responses, 2,534. That's an increase of 109% from 2017. So, we had a lot of responses. Kind of the benchmark throughout the whole nation is that for the mailed surveys, they usually typically receive around 300. In 2017, we had about 800 do the online. And this year, we had over 2,000, which really eclipses other cities. So, from the National Research Council, they said that usually for the online opt-in, cities would get about 1,000 responses. And we had over 2,000. This year, we were able to blend the results because they believed that the online results were very similar to the mailed ones. So, that's why they were able to blend it this year. So, a quick background of who took the surveys, about 72% are ages 25 to 54 years old. Majority were white. 69% worked full-time, 80% own a home, and 50% have children under 17 in the household. We typically, in the past, have reported how many residents lived in Gilbert over 10 years, but we had more live in Gilbert under 10 years. So, that's 58%. So, moving on to the rankings nationwide, we ranked number one in overall quality of new development in Gilbert and available affordable quality food. They are much higher than the national benchmarks. And as you can see here, number two for the housing options, fiber downtown, sidewalk maintenance, economic development. And then, third, in overall quality of businesses, direction Gilbert is taking, and street lighting. I did want to note here that we are higher, or much higher, than the national benchmark. Compared to our peer communities, these are 17, most in Arizona, Scottsdale, Mesa, Tempe, but also cities that had a similar population size, we ranked number one in over 50, or 51% of the categories. And it would have been really long to list it all on here. So, I kind of picked out three. Overall quality of life in Gilbert, value of services for taxes paid, which actually increased 8% from 2017, and then treating all residents fairly. The one we marked number two was overall customer service by Gilbert employees, and number three, service for the federal government. But again, these are much higher. And we ranked, I just wanted to shout out to the number one and 51%. Okay. So, the livability report that the National Research Council kind of bases the survey on is off of three pillars. That's community characteristics, participation, and governance. So, just a quick snapshot, the overall quality of life rated similarly from 2017 to 2019 with 98% rating it excellent or good. And the bottom two graphs, I kind of wanted to note the colors. So, dark blue, kind of moving forward in this presentation, means we ranked higher than the national benchmark. This medium blue color means we're similar. And if you see a really light blue color, that means we're lower than the national benchmark. From 2017 to 2019, the one increase was in safety. And then, the two most important resident priorities was safety and the economy. So, same in 2017 and 2019. So, going to the first pillar, community characteristics, what makes a community livable, attractive, and a place where people want to be? Again, we have mostly dark blue, so higher than the national benchmark in most of the categories. 98% rated the town as excellent or good, are a good place to live, ranking fifth out of the nation. The lowest category we ranked on was travel by public transportation. But again, it was similar to the national. For governance, how well does the government of Gilbert meet the needs and expectations of its residents? Again, we ranked higher or similar to the national benchmark. And we ranked number seven out of 433 municipalities for the overall quality of town services. The lowest here were traffic signal timing, bus or transit services, and drinking water. But similar to national averages. And then, participation. So, most residents do feel connected to the town with eight and 10, assessing the sense of community as excellent or good, which eclipses levels seen across the nation. We ranked number 18 out of 316. Here, we see we're similar to the national benchmark. There was, there were two that ranked lower, and that was stocked emergency supplies and, where's the other one? Used public transportation. But I do want to note that the used public transportation, a lot of residents marked don't know. So, they just didn't know how to answer that question. For our custom questions, we had one asking, what is your, like, what are the reasons for living in Gilbert? And what are your reasons if you were to leave Gilbert? The top three reasons for living in Gilbert were quality of life in general, feel safe in Gilbert, and housing options. And if residents were to decide that they wanted to leave, these were the top three reasons, were the cost of living, quality of life in general, and better housing options. So, looking into the future, we pulled out some major themes from the reports. So, again, the top two priorities were safety and economy. And safety ranked very similar throughout the past five years, around 98% of rating positively. For economy, the two are the reasons for living in Gilbert were the housing options and the cost of living. And if they were to leave, would be the housing options and cost, or better housing options and cost of livings. Between 2017 and 2019, affordable quality housing, housing options and cost of living did decrease a little bit. So, that is a consideration moving on to the future is economy. Another theme we noticed was mobility, or a lot of the streets. So, traffic by public transportation and traffic flow decreased from 2017 to 2019. Two of the lowest ones under governance was traffic signal timing and bus and transit services. And we did notice that between, because in the full report that you, that they provided, we noticed that detached housing and attaching housing units rated transportation a little bit differently. So, 73% say in an attached housing unit said that they would consider moving to another community if they didn't have access to convenient transportation. So, transportation options and flows, especially with the streets, may be consideration for future excellence in mobility. And lastly, with engagement and governance, I know there's a lot on this slide right here, but I wanted to point out that only 43% of the residents who took the survey contacted Gilbert employees. 88% have not contacted council. But we rated very highly, higher than the national average in a lot of the different services. So, values for services for taxes paid, overall directions, confidence. So, I really want to point out that a lot of the residents aren't contacting us, but they are very supportive and think positively. One kind of notable difference was that younger residents are less likely to indicate a strong sense of community. So, they ranked a lot lower in contacting elected officials, attending a public meeting, watching the meetings online, or even voting. So, voting was one of the biggest things we noticed. It decreased. So, 69% said they voted in a local election, where it was in the 90s and the other age ranges. So, younger resident outreach also may be a consideration in the future. And that's it. So, thank you. I want to shout out to everyone who took the survey and the results.
Terrific. Thank you, Melissa. And thank you, Melanie, both of you, for the work that you did. And presenting it to us is really helpful. I have some serious takeaways from that. Luckily, one of them, traffic signal timing and a smart transportation network is something that, as a council, we've already, I think, we have our pulse on the finger of the community, or our finger on the pulse of the community, because we knew that. We knew that from the feedback that we've gotten, that traffic and traffic signal timing is an important component. So, I'm excited that we actually knew that even ahead of the survey. And the survey confirms that. Any questions for Melissa from the council? Really great job. And I'd love for us to utilize some of the data and information that we have in here as we compile for our fall retreat. So, as we look forward to the fall retreat, which will come up here fast and furious in a couple of weeks, that we look at some of these items in depth and figure out ways to meet the needs of our residents. So, thank you. Thanks, Melissa. Any boards, commission, and committee reports? Been a summer. Yeah, a little quiet. It's picking up fast, though. That's for sure. All right. I do note that we have some future agenda items, including the one that Councilmember Taylor submitted today. Report from Town Manager on current events. Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I want to recognize two long-term employees that are retiring from our Public Works Department. One is Jesse Peña. Jesse started with the town of Gilbert in 1992. I'm sorry, not our Public Works Department, Parks and Rec Department.
No, Public Works.
Is it Public Works? Oh, he started in our Parks and Rec Department. He's retiring from our Public Works Department. It's our first council meeting in a month. In 1992, in our Parks and Rec Department, as a seasonal park ranger, and was hired on full-time as a maintenance worker. Not long after that, '93, transferred into the Water Department as a water maintenance worker, followed by senior maintenance, or senior water maintenance worker. From 1999 to present, he transferred into streets, first as streets maintenance worker on the long-line striping crew, shortly after he was promoted to senior streets maintenance worker over crack seal, and then as streets maintenance worker in streetlights, followed by where he was a signal tech specialist III, as well as Caesar Encinas. He started working with the town in 1996 in streets, his entire career, beginning as a maintenance worker with a concrete crew. Then, as a maintenance worker in the crack seal, he moved to long-line striping crew for the last 15 years of his career, and he operated a street sweeper. So, we thank them for their service to this community and wish them well on their retirement.
Like, there isn't a corner of the community probably that hasn't been touched by the two of them. So, yeah, great work. Our Public Works team is pretty incredible. Patrick forgot his glasses today. I think we can all tell.
I broke my glasses. Yet to get them fixed. Okay. Hot off the press, I just was reminded, our longtime Fire Marshal, Dan Dubois, has retired. So, Dan will be greatly missed. He did an excellent job serving our community. And we will begin a national recruitment for his replacement very soon.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. Report from Council on current events. Start with Councilmember Taylor and then Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to give two big thank yous. One is to Parks and Rec for their aquatics program, finishing that up. And there's just so much, so much good that's done in the community with teaching people to swim. And I didn't hear as, I didn't hear as many drownings this year as in times past. I'm not sure what the exact numbers are, but that does make such a positive impact, not just on safety, but also helping and prep for the competitive seasons. And it's fun to see them succeed. Second thing is, I had a neighbor that required some fire service and was just reminded how great we have it here with our fire department. Just wanted to thank them for the excellent job that they do, not just in Settlers Point, but all across our town. And just wanted to thank them. Just, it was a great reminder of what a great fire department that we have. And you could pass that to your team. I'd sure appreciate it. Mayor, thank you.
Mayor, thank you. I attended a promotion ceremony over at the Gilbert Police Department this afternoon and thought I would just mention that four officers were promoted to sergeant. So, we have now new Sergeant Josh Wybrun, Sergeant John Halliday, Sergeant Sharon Castronova, and Sergeant Matthew Reel. And it was fun to watch them have their badges pinned on by their loved ones and enjoy that celebration. And one of them was Colin DeWitt's son-in-law, so former chief Colin DeWitt was there in the audience. And I get to speak with him, too. So, that was a treat.
Great. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, thank you. In talking about the parks, next month, we're going to have our ribbon-cutting ceremony of the Gilbert Regional Park in South Gilbert. Phase 1A, the date, I could share, but they're asking me not to share. But toward the end of September, all of us will be given an invite to celebrate that first Phase A of the South Regional Park.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just one other reminder, we are preparing our calendar year 2020 schedule and looking at some changes to our council meeting schedule. And wanted to make sure that the council was aware. And we've discussed it a little bit previously, but moving our council meetings from Thursday nights to Tuesday nights starting in January. So, we just wanted to make sure that we were putting that on the radar as early as possible. Hopefully, we'll have a draft of this calendar for approval of the council on the August 15th agenda. So, if you have any feedback for me about dates that do or don't work, recognizing that some activities are already being scheduled into 2020, please communicate with me, and we'll make sure that we have this available. And so, if staff hadn't heard that that was a go movement, Tuesday nights will probably be better in the long run for all of us than Thursday nights, recognizing a lot of action takes place here. And that council, town offices are closed on Fridays. So, having that action take place on Tuesday, where immediately the next day, we can hit the ground running with some of those decisions, wanted to make sure that the team was aware of that change. So, with that, I think we've covered everything we needed tonight, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.